Okay, well, it's trying again now. Got it?
Yep, got it, thanks.
Cool, thank you.
Where's the mayor?
Yep, got it, thanks.
Oh, oh boy.
Thank you.
It's not good. Got it.
Hi Martha.
Hello, how are you Bob?
Hi Martha.
Hello.
Martha.
How is everybody?
Hey Jim.
How you doing?
Good.
Jay, you look scary big.
You can't hear us.
Alright, how do I do this?
He does look scary big.
He does.
Not too much, how we doing?
Good to see you.
Yes.
I haven't seen you in so long.
That better Jay?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep.
Alright, I just picked it up, thank you.
Cool.
Oh there he is.
Anthony, just so that you know, I did um forward Marion Gillette, the Zoom contact, I wasn't sure how she was going to be able to join most easily, so.
Awesome.
I know, I know she's interested in getting on and I, I'm not certain of her technological um abilities, so.
I sent her the link to the instructions. So maybe she decided to go that way.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
Getting a little bit nervous about the Wi-Fi at the hall, to be honest with you.
Are, are you on that other one that Russ gave us last time?
I'm on the, the Village Guest one, and it's still on four bars, but it just said unstable internet connection, so we'll see how that goes.
If something happens uh where a council member is disconnected, the entire meeting has to stop. Until that council member, I mean, if you're mid-sentence, it has to stop.
Okay.
Until that council member reconnect.
Using different Wi-Fi's is probably not gonna have much effect because it's still the same internet connection. Unless there's multiple connections coming into that building.
No, I'm just saying that the Wi-Fi is bad as it is here.
It's, it's probably not the Wi-Fi that's the problem, it's probably the internet connection.
Oh, okay.
Is, that's what I'm getting at. It's probably just a lot of bandwidth going on that internet at the same time, because every single stream is a whole video stream.
Well, it's only me and the mayor here.
And that might not be too bad.
Yeah, hopefully not.
Does it tell you how many people are watching? Twelve of us, huh?
Tim, you're muted.
Mayor, you're muted. I have a flag over there.
Are we supposed to stand up and watch?
Okay, Mr. Cantor, do your roll call.
Sure will. Mike Thompson.
Here.
Chris Graff.
Here.
Anthony Latanzio.
Here.
Jim Walkama.
Here.
Martha Morgan.
Here.
Samuel Mafi.
Yeah.
Mayor Schickelhughes.
Here.
Solicitor Maseko is in attendance, and I'm Robert Cantor, fiscal officer.
Chief Beatty is also here in the village hall.
Chief Beatty is village hall.
Alright, acceptance of the previous council meeting minutes, there's two sets, is that correct?
Correct, there is a special meeting of May 5th and uh April 7th, special meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the April 7th and May 5th meetings of village council.
Second. Second all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Um, should we do notifications of meetings and events to the public and news media? Are we, we're not really having meetings for, other than our general meeting, correct?
Right, I thought it was still on an as-needed basis.
Okay, alright, so our next meeting, um, is it the first or the third Tuesday of June, Jay? What's the ordinance?
The third, the third Tuesday of June.
Tuesday of June, which is the 9th, 16th, correct?
Sounds about right, yes.
Okay, alright, um, so we don't really have any other updates from, as far as that's concerned. A report by the mayor, I have a few things, uh, the April violations bureau account has been balanced, I've also did um the prior two months of February, March, I don't know if I reported that last meeting or not. Um, we are having a Memorial Day celebration, but not the same as it always is, and I have a little media alert here from Jeff Rabel. Excuse me, uh, for the first time, the Sons of the American Legion Squadron 15 will conduct its uh annual meeting virtually. Squadron 15 Commander Jeff Rabel Senior said that the Mahoney Valley Squadron 15 will hold a small ceremony with limited attendance at the War Memorial Building post 15 located on 35 Cortlandt Street. It will be streamed on Facebook Live, it can be found at facebook.com slash SAL Squadron 15, so SAL means Sons of American Legion, so SAL Squadron 15. After facebook.com. Mahoney County Commissioner and Squadron 15 member Anthony Traficani will serve as the keynote speaker. Martin Chelich of Christ Our Savior Parish and Struthers will serve as the pastor, while former polling teacher Bob Wilkinson will be honored as the grand marshal. In the theme of remembering Squadron 15 is asked that 11:05 a.m. on Memorial Day, Monday the 23rd, which is actually the 25th, all polling residents go outside and sing the National Anthem and the Star-Spangled Banner. At 11:45, musicians, especially those who play trumpet, are asked to go outside and play taps to honor and remember those who lost in defense of our great country. It's the least we can do, Rabel said. Another twist this year's Memorial Day weekend is graves decoration. Flags are placed on the graves of veterans the Saturday before Memorial Day in each year. Due to COVID-19 stay-at-home orders and businesses being closed, flags are not available as of this release. When the flags are available, our volunteers, including Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, youth groups and community, will be notified and placement will be scheduled. As the Sons of American Legion, we aren't really used to waiting around to get things done, we're always eager to support our veterans or communities or states and our nation. Put restrictions on us, but we will continue serving those who have served full stream ahead. At some point, the graves will be decorated, said Rabel. So just to recap, um, on Monday, they're gonna have a thing at the, like they always do at Cortland that starts at 11:05. And um follow it live on facebook.com forward slash SAL Squadron 15. And then the last thing I have is I, I talked to Gary and I talked to Russ since that about the light at Nesbit and 170. Um, we, we all know about, we're getting the signal upgrades coming from ODOT. And the light at Nesbit was not warranted under their grant, so we're not, that's not gonna be covered, so we have three choices to do. And I talked to Russ and I just like throw it out to you, because I need to tell Gary what to do, the included into the grant or whatever. So the first option is to completely remove the light, which I don't think is a good option for anyone. Uh, the second option is they'll put up a flashing beacon, just like they were going to do at Johnson Place in North Main Street. And it would have crosswalks and curb cuts for the handicap and everything else, but just be flashing, it's not a, not a flashing red light, just a flashing light. Um, the third option is, well, actually, there's two options for number three. Keep what we currently have and maintain it ourselves, and if something happens maintenance-wise, we're on the hook for that, but we have relations with other peoples in the community that Russ has dealt with and street department, I think we could fix it on our own if we had to. And then the other option, sort of parlaying off of that, is to have MS consultants design a new signal for us, and that would be a cost of probably over a hundred thousand dollars, so I don't think that's a very viable option. Russ thinks we should just keep the existing signal there, maintain it ourselves, but I wanted to throw it out to you guys to see what you thought, and so I can get back to Gary tomorrow.
Is the existing signal on a timer or on a sensor? I don't make it down that far all that often.
Both. So I'm both, he says.
What is that?
There's a um sensors in the pavement, and it's also on a timer, it goes on flash in the evening.
Oh, so, so it never cycles on a timer, it just, the, the timer turns it from flashing to operating, and in order to trigger red on South Main Street, you have to be on Nesbit?
Correct.
Yes.
Correct.
So, so it works, as it currently is, just fine.
Yes. The only reason we discussed not eliminating that light is um, that's a big cut through. That's a big cut through from Springfield, New Milltown, Boardman, and all the school buses, it are coming from that direction. Taking kids to Holy Family, that, that was my point of contention with taking that light out.
So you think it performs a useful function as it is?
Oh, I, I definitely think it's a safety issue to remove that light.
Will we have, um, I think I read in that email we got about this, said that it won't be on the same timer system or same timing procedure, whatever, as the new lights, is that gonna cause any problem at all, Russ?
It's not now.
Okay.
That's why I add, that's why I was wondering, that's exactly why.
And I did discuss with Gary about, and I'm, I think this may be something we can do on our own. And I've discussed this with more than once, um, that we could possibly uh tie it into the system after the new system is already up. But I'm not sure about that.
But it's not going to be at any point flashing red every time the other one's green and blocking the new.
No. It would, it would be just like it is now. If, I'm, I'm sure you've noticed that 170 in North Line and 170 in Nesbit are not synchronized. That's because it was not part of the system last time, for the same problem they're having now, the state won't warrant it. So it would stay how it is now.
It's not entirely bad, it slows cars down.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree, and, and you know, living in that neighborhood, Chris, um there's a lot of people that use that intersection, I'm surprised.
Absolutely.
I'm surprised it didn't make the numbers, to be honest with you.
So Chris, your neighborhood would be in favor of keeping it?
Well, I would definitely, I would definitely think so.
Yeah, I, I would say so also, it, yeah, if you cut that light out, the, they're, they're gonna be trying to shoot, shoot the gap across when they got across 170, and that, that's gonna be a nightmare. Because unless, you know, Holy Family goes a different way to church, but they haven't figured that out yet, they come that way, I mean, there's they, that's just the way they come, so i, i, it, a lot of people cut through that way.
Lot of buses down in the morning.
Lot of buses, that's the third most traveled pedestrian crossing in the village.
Yeah.
Well, that too, and it's difficult to determine, you know, when you're going straight, you know, if you're sitting in front of the, on the green, trying to head up Nesbit Street. You know, there's just enough of a little bit of a jog there where I think the light helps a lot.
Right, and if you gotta go left out of Nesbit and go toward the high school, if you didn't have that light, that's, that's gonna be a nightmare.
Yeah.
You're not gonna be able to.
What I'm gathering, everyone's pretty much in favor of keeping the existing light, is that correct?
Yeah.
That sounds good to me.
Okay, okay, I'll relay that to him, and that is the end of my report. Make a motion to accept the mayor's report. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, a report from our fiscal officer, Mr. Cantor.
Alrighty, well, I, I sent everybody out to bank rec last week for uh April, in the financial report, so if you had any questions on them, you could ask me. Also, we've been dealing with renewing our insurance premiums for the 2020 and 2021, which it actually expires tomorrow. But the new policy, and I believe I sent this to everybody, was today or yesterday, it was just today, this morning. The total cost would be twenty-five thousand eight seventy-five for a regular property liability insurance, which is only up two hundred and forty-four dollars from last year, which is due to the two new vehicles we put on. And they increased our property values by 2.7%, which I think they do every year for new construction, it's not that often. And then also included in here is an additional policy for cybercrime, which Finance Committee met yesterday and believe it's a pretty good idea to get it. It's a five hundred thousand dollar policy with a thousand dollar deductible, and the cost of that is thirty-five seventy-five. So they would take the insurance to a total cost of twenty-eight thousand six hundred and twenty-nine dollars. And then, one more thing, I, I was speaking with Solicitor Maseko today, he had a question if our bridges were covered. The new Mothe Bridge, which is actually listed in the insurance, so that's already scheduled, we're fine with that. And I don't know about the cemetery bridge, because I know we're gonna have a lot of money dumped into that, is that something we wanna add on? And as a listed item covered, it would be an additional five hundred and forty-four dollars for a hundred and ninety thousand dollars of coverage.
What would that coverage pay for? Wha, what would be covered?
The whole entire bridge, I, I'd imagine, it, it was just something Jay asked today, and I sent the, an email to our insurance agent and I guess if it would fall down.
Is this, is this um people getting hurt crossing the bridge, is this um construction related?
Be the bridge itself.
Liability's under, already covered under our policy.
Okay, so this is just the bridge falling down in a storm, or?
Being vandalized or something happening to it.
Get hit by a tree.
Why would we pay for a hundred and ninety thousand dollars in coverage, could we even replace that bridge for that small amount of money?
Well, I, I just figured, because I know we're redoing the bridge for like about a hundred and eighty thousand. I just threw that out there without talking to you guys first, I didn't know it was just shoot off the hip, and we don't have to do it, we could add this later. If we investigate more, if we even need it for it, I don't know. If it wouldn't be covered under our other policies, but it was something that was brought up today, and I just checked into it.
Can we find out if it's covered under our other policies?
Yes.
First, I mean, why pay separately? They'll be happy to sell it to us, even if it's covered, but.
Like, I know the uh Mothe Bridge is listed individually, and that's why I got the quote for it.
Right.
Makes sense.
Um, okay, so we got that going, and then there's also, we have uh with Mr. Dunham, he does our internet website. You know, all the adjustments he posts, you know, does whatever we need him to. And that contract was up in March, right now we are going month to month with him, and his total cost, if we do it annually, is one thousand four hundred and four dollars. If we decide to go monthly, it would be one thousand five hundred and sixty dollars. And so, I mean, I ask you guys to, he gives a 10% discount if we pay annually. Then, could be later, somebody can make a motion, but um I emailed you the list of bills today that I'm gonna ask you to approve later, did everybody get that also?
Yes.
Yes.
And then, last but not least, uh Solicitor Maseko approved, or not approved, but prepared the second resolution for our renewal levy, which everybody should have also. And I think that's all I have.
Motion to accept the fiscal officer's report.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, we have a report from our zoning administrator.
I apologize, I lost my Zoom internet, so I figured I'd show up in person. Um, zoning permits issued, uh, two twenty-four Evergreen, a covered porch, seventy dollars, one forty-one College for a shed, seventy dollars. Two forty-four Edna Shed, seventy dollars, one twenty-eight Massachusetts, shed and deck, seventy dollars. One fifteen Diana Fence, seventy dollars, two twenty-nine Sheridan, front porch, seventy dollars. Sixty-one Alveron Fence, seventy dollars, and twenty-seven Botsford, a new garage, two oh six eighty-one, for a total of six ninety-six eighty-one. The people got a little bit of money in their homes, so they're doing a lot of work, so we had a lot of applications, so. Um, last two architectural review board meetings were canceled due to no new business and the COVID-19 situation. Uh, the upcoming meeting, Monday, June 1st, we do have two items on the agenda, both signed permanent applications, one for 15 East McKinley Way, hometown fixer-upper, uh, former Rustic Birdcage Building, and two South Main TCF Bank, which was a name change, the former chemical bank, so uh, two applications for them to be uh on that uh agenda. Uh, planning, same thing, last couple meetings were canceled due to the lack of new business and COVID-19 concerns. Next meeting was scheduled for Wednesday, May 20th, but it is being canceled. Um, the only pressing item we received was a replat for a Marion Drive address, but as it was just turned in Friday, there's not enough time to send out letters to all the property owners before the meeting anyway, so uh, depending on the homeowner's need, uh, who has yet to get back to me, we may or may not have a special meeting or just consider that in June. Um, I do still have to set up training with Richard Bell, Mahoney County JIS, I left that on there, just with COVID, that hasn't happened yet. And investigations, uh, vehicle parking grass, twenty-two Ohio, that's been rectified. Oversized recreational vehicle, twenty Ohio, uh, spoke with the homeowner, that will be rectified also. Uh, improper signage, uh, one sixty-eight North Main had a complaint on that one, that's been removed. And one North Main Street, that one has been removed also. Um, exterior maintenance, two fifty-nine North Main Street, um that one was the uh household furniture appliances. Uh, garage door was uh painted by the children, that kind of thing, and the, the, most of that's been corrected, that's the one that now has a pallet wall that's, we've been discussing on with uh Jay Maseko and that, to see if there's anything that could be done there. Um, twenty-one Massachusetts, so our ongoing issue on Massachusetts, um, pretty much gave him a thirty-day fix it, or it's going with the solicitor, and we're gonna start the administrative penalties on that one. Um, one oh six Massachusetts, there was some high grass and some soffit issues, I dealt with the maintenance company, that one is a vacant property. The grass was cut, uh, still waiting for the soffit to be fixed. Um, and then seventeen College, I dealt with homeowner last year, told him that this year we were gonna have to look at getting that painted, so we'll see what happens there. Uh, that's all I have.
Seven College, the, the, the frame house where the paint's practically gone.
What's that?
Is seventeen College that frame house on the left going towards the school where the paint's practically gone?
Yes, on the one side, yeah, on the school side, yeah, exactly.
I'll make a motion to accept the zoning report.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you sir, um, report from our solicitor.
Good evening, everyone, uh, the, the report I have tonight will probably be a little longer than, than normal, just because we, we haven't had our regular meetings for some time. Uh, certainly, I, I think I'll be the first of many, you know, to, to acknowledge what our safety forces have been doing during this pandemic, along with essential employees and businesses that continue to operate during the pandemic, and uh I certainly want to wish the best to businesses that will be reopening under the amended orders uh from Columbus, with a special thanks to my barber. I couldn't have been more happy uh to get in there yesterday. Uh, I am certainly monitoring these COVID orders. Uh, right now, depending on how you look at it, there are as many as three out there, but it seems to be whittling down to two. Uh, recall that back in March, uh, the first order from the Department of Health came out, uh, and it was a, it then became an amended order about three weeks later. Uh, that's, that's the order that, that we've been laboring under uh since very early March. Last week, uh, little more than a week ago, the, the governor and the director of health put out the responsible restart Ohio orders uh with certain guidelines and schedules for different businesses about when they could reopen and under what circumstances, uh, and what obligations they would have to meet in, in order to have the public present uh or interacting. Just today, and, and I have not yet had a chance to look at it, uh, the governor put out an order amending the amended stay-at-home order. Uh, it is called the Ohioans Protecting Ohioans Order, uh, which if you think about it, has quite an unfortunate acronym. Uh, but it, it should be published by now, I certainly plan on uh getting a copy of it and going over it and seeing exactly what it is that we will need to do to return to normal operations. Uh, I know that's something I talked briefly about with the mayor. Uh, I talked with Chief Beatty, and I talked with, well, I exchanged some text messages with Mike Thompson earlier concerning the, these orders. So we'll, we'll have to sort through them, and uh personally, I, I think a a reopening uh will be happening sooner rather than later, and, and we'll be resuming normal operations. Uh, hopefully in the near future. In, in terms of, of legislation, uh, last time we met, or at the last meeting, there was the resolution to certify to the auditor for tax valuation. The auditor's office did return uh the numbers that were required. And so, what may be up for consideration as soon as tonight is what I sent out to all of you, which is the resolution to place the tax renewal on the November ballot. Uh, whenever you renew uh any tax levy, there is this two-step process. So tonight, uh, if it is considered, uh, would be step two of two. Also, I believe I circulated a draft of an exterior property maintenance uh ordinance that was a supplement to the, to the ordinance that we already have in place. And it was directly related to the situation that, that Tim Claven uh talked about during his report, which was on North Main Street, uh, the mayor had received some inquiries from nearby citizens concerning the conditions. Uh, when I looked at uh the existing ordinance, I, I wasn't so sure that it fit as neatly as I would like it. Uh, but I do certainly uh credit to Tim Claven all along the way, who has mainly been able to gain verbal compliance uh with, with all of these people uh to whom he's directed. So I, I'm sure at some point, uh, and maybe with some tweaks, we will be asking council to consider uh that supplemental exterior property maintenance ordinance. In terms of the Violation Bureau and day-to-day business, uh, that, that Paula mainly handles, I, I did receive an email from her the other day, just expressing some concern uh about taking cash, because people, I told her, and certainly as council knows, uh, we suspended the uh, the violations bureau, the operations of violations bureau, until we had a better idea of what was going on, but people were still voluntarily paying. Um, that prompted me to start to look into accepting online payments. Uh, I know Struthers Municipal Court and a number of other courts uh have moved to online payments, and we can accept them not only for uh waivers, fines, fines and costs, uh, related traffic tickets. Uh, theoretically, we could certainly accept them for uh permits and, and ultimately administrative fines, penalties, uh et cetera, but I, I at least want to look into it at first uh for the possibility of accepting online secured payments in regard to traffic tickets that are processed by the violations bureau. And just when you thought that the solicitor's report couldn't get any more exciting, uh, I noticed on the council agenda that, that Mr. Thompson uh had intended to talk about retention and archiving of council member emails. Uh, that certainly piqued my interest, caused me to look into our records retention policy. Now, one thing I wanna say at the beginning is that retention and archiving are, are really two different things. Uh, I, I think the archiving or storage issue came up. really two different things, uh, I, I think the archiving or storage issue came up, uh, and, and some of you who are using the IDMI login for your village email accounts, uh, may sometimes run into a warning that says your mailbox is nearing capacity, and, and I think that's what prompted Michael to, to initially reach out. So there are ways to, to store these things or, or archive these things, uh, for, and I'll tell you, on, on my end, I run my village email through Outlook on my laptop, and so I have not run into any, uh, storage issue, but, uh, I, I think the real key here is retention, and this is something that, that all of us should, should be concerned about. Uh, when it comes to emails, they're certainly covered by correspondence in our records retention policy, uh, whether or not it's a public record, as I have stated on a few other occasions, depends on the substance, it has to relate to the village business, or the business of the village, and so literally, and if you think about all the emails we get, this can become burdensome, it, it is, as you receive them, you have to determine if this is something that needs to be retained. Uh, there, there is language that appears in nearly every records retention policy around the state, uh, that the correspondence or the item, uh, is no longer administratively necessary. So for example, if, if you receive, uh, message, uh, from Paula, or somebody calls into Village Hall and, and it says, well, a certain citizen would like you to call them tomorrow, uh, once tomorrow passes and, and you fulfill that, that message is no longer administratively necessary, uh, something like that can be disposed of, a, a sticky note that is a reminder for you to do something, uh, probably not administratively necessary. Likewise, if you send an email not related to village business, uh, so I, I send an email to Jim Wakama and say, hey, Jim, let's meet for lunch tomorrow, uh, that email really isn't about the business, uh, of the village, so, you know, we, we are gonna need to take a, a close look at this, and the reason it's so important is that court, certainly we have our obligations under state law to maintain public records, but our records retention policy requires that routine form letters be retained for one year, general correspondence be retained for two years, correspondence with the legislation, the legislative branch, all of you guys, be retained for three years, and correspondence, uh, among the executive branch be retained for five years. There are some areas of the, the records retention policy that we are going to have to update, particularly in terms of social media, uh, I'm also gonna wanna sit down with, uh, department heads and, and other employees and make sure that everything we have is covered, because there's a chance that we could have introduced some new forms or, or there's new documents out there, or there may be others that we don't use, although the, the records retention policy is, is very broad and, and generic, but social media is definitely something that we are going to need retain, need to address specifically, uh, although it could be dealt with under correspondence. The other thing, uh, that is very important to remember is, even if you start hitting those milestones, so one year, two years, three years, or five years, um, in terms of correspondence or other specific public records, that doesn't mean you can automatically get rid of it, uh, we actually have to convene a meeting of the Records Commission, uh, which consists of the mayor and I, a citizen, a secretary, and there is the option of employing an archivist or a records manager to assist in organizing these records, and if we think there is a time when we want to list and get rid of, uh, public records, for example, the traffic tickets from nineteen seventy-two, they're up in the attic of Village Hall, uh, we actually have to list that we want to dispose of those, send it to Columbus, send it to the Ohio Historical Society, and they have to give us the okay. Uh, I think routine traffic tickets, uh, certainly from the seventies and eighties, are, are of no worth, uh, but you know, if someone famous came through town, if Bob Hope got a ticket, uh, you know, at some point in time, uh, maybe the state of Ohio would be interested in retaining something like that, but, uh, the reality is that we have to do some updates and some catching up in terms of the Records Commission, but the takeaway from all of this legal lecturing is that for now, uh, all of you need to do your best to preserve each and every email, uh, and other, uh, documents of, of official correspondence or that represent the business of village, until we can catch up with this thing, it take the bull by the horns, and start disposing of some of these old records. So with that, and I'm sure all of you are relieved, that is the end of the solicitor's report.
Jay, can I ask a quick question? And that is, um, if it...
Something happened to the audio?
I understand that Mike, um, may have approached you about this, or have put this on the agenda, because he has his emails run through IDMI, and we get these messages that say that your email box is getting to be full.
That's my understanding, yes.
And I myself have gotten those, and the only way, the way I cured that was to try and take out things like, um, the scheduling notifications among the ARB, uh, you know, board members, you know, uh, so that each month when we would schedule our meeting, everybody sort of sent a bunch of emails saying, can you make this meeting? Yeah, I can make this meeting go up, so I got rid of all of those kind of, trying to get rid of those, as you say, the, the sticky notes kind of ones. Is there a way that we can, uh, we individually can, I can take all of my twenty eighteen emails and put them into some other file where they can be retained, but they are not in my email box, so they're not taking up room in my email, but they're retained for legal purposes, because I, I have a, you know, I, I don't, don't want to run afoul of the retention requirements, um, but I have limited space in my email.
Right, you, you raised a very good point, and, and that's, while it's ultimately a, a question that's probably better directed towards Rob Dunham or representative from IDMI, you know, for example, we talked about increasing the mailbox capacity, uh, for the village. Ideally, what I envision is something that, that you just talked about, so at the end of the year, we just sweep these email accounts, and they actually go into one central repository, uh, you know, some sort of server or storage device, so that if we do get a, uh, public records request that, that needs to be honored, I or, or that records manager can just go to one spot, instead of reaching out to each and every one of you and saying, hey, would you please search your email, uh, for anything that might comply with this public records request? Uh, so I think the short-term solution, Martha, is that we are gonna increase a bit of the, uh, mailbox storage capacity, I'm sure that there are now jump drives or portable hard drives that you can move these, uh, emails to in the meantime, so you're getting them off of your, uh, device and not eating up memory space, uh, but you're still preserving them as you're required to do, and then ultimately, and, and the Records Commission will talk about this, uh, just sort of creating and moving everything to that central repository.
Okay.
I hope I answered your question.
Yeah.
Motion to accept the solicitor's report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? All right. And Street Commissioner?
Um, most of my report has been placed in your mailbox in written form, I do have a couple of things to touch on that were, that came up after I typed my report, um, I request council approve the hiring of Charles Butch to fill the full-time opening, uh, left by Ray Hillard when he went to Boardman, I've already passed this information that Anthony because it's on police committees here, um, and I also request council hire Rodney Knight as a part-time patrolman. Um, again, Anthony has that information, um. I also, uh, as soon as we can get titles, um, from the title bureau, which opened back up Monday, as soon as they catch up, we have a couple vehicles, uh, in impound that will be able to sell, also, it would greatly benefit, um, to open as soon as possible, just because of complications with people making reports, people picking up reports, and, uh, uh, it's, it's caused a problem with impound, um, to get a vehicle of impound, um, we need to check the, um, insurance, make sure licensed drivers, that kind of stuff, and, uh, with people not able to get in here, sometimes that information is left up to people that it shouldn't be, so, I, I would appreciate if we could address that as soon as possible, that's it, and the report.
Motion to accept the Police Chief's report.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? Thank you. Um, report from Engineer, you have anything more to report on?
The only thing I was gonna bring up is that during our, uh, finance committee meeting, we were discussing the need to, um, ask Gary to come and join us and discuss the twenty twenty-one streets that he's probably getting ready to put on the list for, uh, road resurfacing so that we can make sure that we are, um, trying to keep a lid on the cost end of things and know what he is, um, putting in the, the, uh, application, which I think is, this is the time of year that he's getting ready to prepare the application for twenty twenty-one, so we thought we could get him in to, to list out for us the streets he's gonna be including.
Martha, uh, just, I just wanted to say real quick, um, he was supposed to come to one of our street meetings, uh, before COVID happened, um, and kind of discuss all that stuff, and that's been canceled and postponed off until now, so that might have to happen before we get solid numbers, anything like that, but as soon as we can schedule something like that, I will, I will do so.
Yeah, our, our concern is that it always seems like that the date for him to submit that grant slips by before we get that input, so we were just trying to make sure we were proactive and on top of inviting him in before he's prepared and submitted the grant.
Hmm, and it's not carved in stone that the streets we have for this year are gonna get done, so we sort of see how that plays out, too.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Anything else, Martha?
No, that's, that was it.
All in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? I don't think we really have any reports about any committees of council, and if there is someone that wants to give one, just let me know, but we haven't met in two months, correct? Correct, same thing for boards, I believe. Correct, okay, um, reports from special committees?
Well, the brick is ready, looks beautiful, thank you, everybody.
Yes, everyone did a good job on that.
Great job, Mayor, uh, Saturday.
Oh, thank you, thank you very much. So Jay, now that that's complete, is that pretty much just dissolve that committee? Is that how you look at it?
Right, I, I think now that Murphy has submitted, uh, their, their notice of substantial completion, and es- essentially, the, the bridge is, is in place, completed, dedicated, and, and we're in the process of getting payment together, I, I just think simply by operation, the Bridge Oversight Committee will dissolve as there is nothing to oversee anymore.
Okay, all right. Um, communications from residents, we have two residents here, anyone I'm sending? No? Okay, all right, um, any new business? I'd just like to stress that what Russ said, we're, we, we had talked before the meeting started here in, in Village Hall, uh, May twenty-sixth is Tuesday, the day after Memorial Day, and I think that's what he would like to reopen the office, but I just wanna make sure you guys are all o- okay with that, and, and if and when it does happen, I'll, you know, address it with Paula and just make sure, get her on page as best we can, and we'll take precautions to clean the areas every day and do what we can do to help that transition.
If, if, if I can ask a quick question about that of the solicitor, um, Jay, when at, at our April seventh meeting, I made a motion to close Village Hall, and, and the way that I phrased the motion was that we would remain closed in accordance with the governor's stay-at-home order as amended or extended, or words to that effect, I made our closing dependent on the existence and the terms of the stay-at-home order, would it be accurate to say that, um, that wording and the way that we voted allows the mayor pretty much, the, whatever authority he needs to organize how we reopen, since we've already technically authorized reopening?
I, I think it is sufficient, uh, as you know, uh, Mike, it, it's always best to be a, a, a belt and suspenders type thing, so if, if you guys wanted to make a motion and, and carry it tonight, uh, to initiate reopening and compliance with the governor's, uh, amended and unfortunately named O P O O order, uh, I, I think that would be fine, uh, but yes, you're, the short answer is your initial, uh, your initial motion and as passed by council is sufficient to keep us moving, but, uh, it, it couldn't hurt to have something additional tonight.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other new business?
I have a quick question for Mr. Cantor, and this is, um, if, if we are currently month-to-month with our IT person, is it worthwhile getting any other quotes on that work before we enter into a new contract?
That's totally up to you guys, I mean, Rob Dunnham's job last few years, but I don't think it's ever a bad thing to get quotes for anything we do, I mean, I could go solicit a few if that's what you guys want to direct me to do, or award him the contract, it's totally up to you.
While Benham's on the phone call, she says that. From a, uh, from a legal standpoint, since the amount is under, uh, the, the state threshold, and we're talking about specialized services, uh, a, a contract such as this could be awarded, there's no requirement, uh, that we obtain three quotes, but it's sort of a best practice, uh, that, that that occur, I, I think it makes auditors happy when they see that. And that's nothing against Mr. Dunham, uh, I'm, I'm just looking to the future, uh, in terms of, of when audits come up and should we ever be requested to, to produce such information.
And in the past, when we've done three bids before and other things, under twenty-five thousand is lowest and best, so it's not necessarily you have to take the lowest, just what you feel, the lowest.
Absolutely.
And where the best is.
Right, and this is a specialized service, so that, that's even out the window a little bit.
Yeah, and, and you'd like, like Solicitor said, we do not have to solicit quotes, 'cause it, it's ten thousand dollars or over is when you're supposed to, but...
If, if we weren't going to not award it tonight and seek other bids, um, are we still going to be continued, continuing to pay him monthly until that process is complete, or?
That would be my assumption, I mean, we're utilizing his services, so I would assume that we would continue to pay for the services that we use.
Yeah.
And, and I, I'm not bound to anything, I, my question was simply, you, you know, one of whether it made any sense to, to try and get bids to see what that would cost, um, to find out what other municipalities did about this, but it seems like other places either have in-house IT people or utilize schools or that sort of thing, I don't know if we're in the exact same situation that other municipalities are in when seeking this kind of service, but I don't know if it's worth looking, uh, to, to, uh, seek other bids on this kind of job.
I, uh, I, I agree with the general point, and I'm usually very much a three-bids type of guy, that's how I was raised, the one presidentarian, so to speak, um, but, but at the same time, on, on this particular one, I mean, I think Rob's been very attentive, um, you, you know, I went down to meet with Mark Thompson one time in the woods about, like, the erosion project, and Rob was down there volunteering to cut up trees to, or clear path or something, um, I, I mean, I wonder, just on this particular one, Martha, um, you know, if we're happy with his services and it's a pretty small, um, dollar amount, I wonder if we'd be okay on this one? And, and, and I'm totally a three-bids, I, I, I wonder if we need that.
For me, I ask it on every contract that we undergo, you know, that's just my way of having done business, but I...
That philosophy, I just wonder if this is an exception, and I'm sorry I interrupted you.
I think he's done a really nice job, and, uh, I'll probably make the motion to renew it tonight, and we'll see if it passes or not, and if not, we can go the three-bid route, if that works with everybody.
And if we do not renew for the year, we lose the ten percent discount, because it will be fifteen cents.
I've, um, had the finance yesterday, as we talked about, uh, I made some inquiries with, uh, Boardzam on other municipalities that while we were at the committee and later on during the day, and... and Martha and Jim and Bob, I'm sorry I didn't get back to you, but other things going on. The majority of everybody else seemed to use an in-house IT person. So it's gonna be very difficult on our small um website and what we do compared to everybody else to probably find other quotes at this time. I just wanna weigh in over that.
Thank you.
All right, any other new business?
Any old business? Okay, motions, ordinances, resolutions?
Well, if, I'll start with this one. Although I have a procedural question about the solicitor, I would, and and the resolution to place the renewal levy on the ballot, do do I need to move to suspend three readings? Do I need to move something else before I do it?
Uh you yes, you need to move to waive the three readings.
I I moved to waive the three readings on a resolution determining to proceed with the submission to the electors the question of levying a tax in excess of the ten mil limitation and declaring an emergency. I don't have to read the rest of it, do I?
No.
Second.
Second, Anthony, roll call.
Mike Thompson.
Yes.
Christopher Graff.
Yes.
Yes.
Jim Walkama.
Yes.
Martha Morgan.
Yes.
Samuel Mafi.
Yeah.
Six zero.
Okay. Um at this time, I would move the, oh crap, I scrolled down. Hang on. I would move the approval of a resolution determining to proceed with the submission to the electors the question of levying a tax in excess of the ten mil limitation and declaring an emergency. So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Michael Thompson.
Yes.
Chris Graff.
Yes.
Nathaniel Tansio.
Yes.
Jim Walkama.
Yes.
Martha Morgan.
Yes.
Sam Mafi.
Yeah.
Motion moves six zero.
Uh procedural question, uh Mr. Solicitor or Mr. Cantor, I'm not sure which. I noticed that this uh piece of paper with the signatures of all six council members, how do you want to deal with that?
I should be able to hunt you guys down tomorrow or the next day and get this signed.
There isn't a paper copy at the hall right now that Anthony and I could sign?
No, there's not. I didn't make it down there today.
We could get it there by the morning.
Oh, yeah, I'll be down there early in the morning. I could drop one off.
I'm away until Saturday.
Okay.
All right, ready to keep going?
Good.
Okay, all right, I'd like to make a motion to hire Charles Butch to the uh position of full-time police officer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You opposed? Okay.
Hey, Russ, what would be the his start date, just so I know?
Um it'll probably be, we're still working that out. Um it will be sometime at least the middle of next month, I would guess.
Okay, it's not gonna be for the, okay.
No, we have a while.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Sure. All right, and then I'd also like to make a motion to hire Rodney Knight uh to the position of part-time police officer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right.
Month also, Russ?
Is being start time for him?
Um yeah, again, it's still in negotiations, but um uh I I will get with him. I had the issues approved before we discussed that, so I'll get with him uh in the morning.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
All right, then I got one more. Uh I'd like to make a motion to renew the contract with Tailored IT Solutions for Village Website Maintenance for the year two thousand twenty.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Motion moves six zero then, correct? I didn't hear any dissensions.
I did not either. Was there anyone, anyone did just say that?
No, I'm not, I'm not in uh, I'm not opposed to it.
Okay. Okay. All right, any other motions, ordinances, or resolutions?
Um I make a motion that council authorize the mayor to take all actions necessary to bring village operations in line with the orders of the governor of the Ohio Department of Health or or any other authorized entity issuing closing of public entities.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
You opposed? Okay. Um are we voting to renew the Wicker Insurance, Martha, or is anyone making?
Yes, yeah, we should do that also.
I make a motion then to uh renew the uh insurance through Wicker Insurance. The total there was twenty-eight thousand, six hundred, twenty-one dollars. That adds in a cyber crimes uh option on top of it. I think that was the, I think that was what was agreed to, so I'm gonna add that into the motion.
Yeah, twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars total.
Twenty-nine, okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You opposed? Okay, any other motions, ordinances, or resolutions?
Uh I have one, it sort of got, we ended up talking about it mostly in the solicitor's report, but on the issue of retention archiving of emails. Um it I I meant to throw in, and then I forgot. But we 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 got a quote from IDMI that would add an additional five hundred megabytes of storage to every email address in the village for a cost of one dollar and sixty-three cents per month per account. Um I'd make a motion that we authorize the fiscal officer to um en- engage that. I mean, that's that's not much of a cost, it's to double the capacity of those accounts. Solve Martha's and my problems for the time being. I can't use Outlook. Uh my work email is Outlook. Microsoft products are constantly trying to unify themselves, and if the village system gets entangled with my law firm, then may God have mercy on my soul.
Right, and I'm not even, I'm not even gonna ask for a second quote on that amount. I'm gonna second Mr. Thompson's motion that we go ahead and and go with IDMI's uh one dollar and sixty-three cents per per client.
Do we want to use council, solicitor, and mayor and fiscal officer, or all the ones that we have?
Bobby, I don't need it.
Okay.
So there, I saved a dollar sixty-three.
You know, I'll, I'll get a list of everybody who we have and then
Let's make it standard.
Yeah, I would say just make it standard.
Yeah.
Agree.
Just because Jay doesn't need it, I'd say give it to him anyhow. Take it from us, Jay, it's a perk.
There's your raise, Jay. Okay. So Martha, you second, is that correct?
What's that?
You second that or?
Yeah, I seconded it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, any other motions, ordinances, or resolutions? Uh second and third readings. Presentation of the bills.
Make a motion, we pay the bills.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You opposed? All right, questions from the news media, is he JT Whitehouse is on here? JT, any questions?
I guess not. I think his audio is one way. I said hello to him earlier, but we didn't get
Okay, well, if he does, I'll track us down again. Uh remarks by counsel, Mr. Thompson.
Oh, uh I plan on attending the Memorial Day gathering on Monday since it's right down the street from me. You know, if I was not to, for for whatever reasons, personal safety or anything else, um will be represented.
Mr. Volcano?
Um it'll be nice to uh all get back to our regular meetings on the next meeting, so I'm looking forward to that.
Yes, absolutely. Mr. Mafi?
Uh no comment, everybody stay safe.
Okay, this is Morgan.
Uh I actually have gotten to the point where I'm almost, you know, enjoying the Zoom meetings, but it will be nice um to see everybody in person. I I think it'll be a little disquieting, but it'll it'll also be good to um actually see everybody in person, so I'm looking forward to it. And um yeah, stay safe and we'll see you uh next council meeting mid-June.
Yep, Mr. Graff?
I am looking forward to regular meetings. I cannot watch one more Zoom interview on the news or anywhere. Uh but uh I love the bridge, uh great job with the Oversight Committee and everything. It looks great down there. It's great to see people out and using it and great to see people in the forest.
Mr. Tansio?
Uh Bridge looks wonderful. Nice job doing the dedication, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, thank you.
That's all.
It is eight twenty-five.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you, everyone. Have a safe time. Happy Memorial Day. We'll see you.
Thank you.
Thank you.